That being said, we created that five-year strategic plan. Just for everyone's awareness, because this is something that's going to be coming down the pike. In 2024 and 2025, it'll be our last year of our strategic plan. We will be doing the build process again for our next strategic plan. Because as we all know, we can't, we're not going to accomplish everything in five years. It's my hope that we accomplish all the things that we put in our strategic plan within those five years. But we're always looking to see, are there new things? Are there better things? Are there adjustments that need to be made to our practice to continue to compete, to put forth the best product for everyone? So, I'm sorry, can you just go back for one second? We're going to put this on a website. I just want to kind of walk you through the different aspects of this. Down here, this is our progress monitoring website. We put this together because we know, even though we're doing presentations, if people want more information, it's an opportunity to see all of the work that we're doing. All the frames are going to be detailed here. But if you click in the frame, you'll see the different goals within each frame. We have progress monitoring bars, which we have not updated to meet this specific update. We're going to do that at the end of the year. But it really keeps us focused on making sure that we're spreading our efforts across all the different frames of our strategic plan. So I just wanted to remind everyone that we have that in place. When you start to click through that, which Dr. Fair just did, not only are there the progress monitoring bars, but there's more granular information of the work that's been done. Because as we said, our goal is transparency. We want to make sure not only we talking about it, but there's evidence behind it to show that the work is being done. Thank you, Dr. Fair. So with that... If you can just go to the next slide. With that, I'm going to speak to curriculum and instruction. As we all know, there's four different frames. There's the curriculum and instruction frame, there's the SEL frame, there's the facilities frame, and there is the community connections frame, okay? Within the curriculum and instruction frame, it really talks about our ideas of creating... No, you're perfect, this is perfect. Our ideas of looking at our instruction and making sure that it's hitting all over the indicators of what best practice is. Are we creating innovative experiences for our students? Are they able to collaborate? Are they able to utilize technology at a high level? Not just technology for technology's sake. Are we creating high-level experiences for them to make sure that they're exposed to it and they're able to navigate it? So I have two slides that I'm going to just try to spotlight, but I just want to anchor into the first two. Because we've said this before, I've said this to the board in private, and I'm going to say it to the community. Amazing things are happening here in Mawa. And it's about time for people to know what Mawa is all about. So most recently, we received an award, which we touched on at the last meeting, but because we're doing a strategic plan update, I think it's worth repeating. Most recently, we were recognized by the ITEEA, which is the International Technology and Engineering Educators Association. We just received an award for Mawa High School. They were honored as a school of excellence. What that, obviously, people are going to say, what does that even mean? The ITEEA STEM Center of Teaching and Learning recognizes outstanding schools for their commitment to providing robust, integrative STEM, and for anyone who doesn't know, science, technology, engineering, and math education program. Schools recognized exemplify outstanding leadership in the field of STEM education. Recognized schools undergo a rigorous application process, requiring detailed documentation to demonstrate a strong, integrative STEM program. A panel of reviewers will reach consensus that the documented evidence represents excellence in integrative STEM education. The ITEEA created the designation as a way to officially recognize those schools whose teachers, administrators, and other stakeholders are providing a meaningful STEM education experience for the students. By highlighting these schools, ITEEA hopes to help others learn effective best practices and continue sharing them more broadly into the larger STEM educational community. So that's our first recognition. Why am I saying first?
Because there's more.
Because there's more. If you look at the second bullet point, within the last week, we were just honored. And we were just considered, we were just named future-ready certified. What does future-ready certified mean, you may ask? Future-ready certification, I'm sorry for reading, but it's worth giving you all the detail. Future-ready certification, the team that developed this specific application was Dr. Fair, Dr. Linda Bavino, Ms. Ruth Davis, and a large number of teachers across the district, inclusive of the media specialists. They all came together, they took a look at what our current functioning is, they spotlighted the things that we were doing, but they also started to talk about what we needed to do in the future. A little bit about the future-ready program. At the heart of future-ready schools and the interactive planning dashboard is the future-ready framework, a robust structure for digital learning visioning, planning, and implementation focused on student-centered learning. The research-based framework emphasizes collaborative leadership and creating an innovative school culture. All content focuses on seven areas, which I'll talk about in a little bit. And as referenced gears, plus leadership, each of which is addressed during the comprehensive planning process. Mawa Schools has undergone this planning process to create an action plan unique to our school district and ultimately keeps student learning at the heart of our decision-making. This action plan will serve as the roadmap for our school district in the months and years ahead, as we work to ever improve our instructional programs, technology integration, and the shared leadership requires to implement all instruction amongst our pre-K 12 programs and across our six buildings. The different gears that I was talking about on the top are curriculum instruction and assessment, personalized professional learning, robust infrastructure, budget and resources, community partnerships, data and privacy, and use of space and time. So these two awards, if you go to our website, will be visible on our homepage. We'll also make sure that we have things up around the school district to make sure anyone who comes in knows that we are recognized for these awards. And finally, we wanted to wait to present this to the board. We'll be sending out communication on the future-ready certification in the coming days. If you remember, we already sent out the information about the ITEEA recognition. So I'm happy to say that we're doing this. I'm going to go through the rest very quickly because this is something that we talked about at other meetings, but it's worth talking about now.
Dr. Torro, could I just jump in real quick? Just since we're bragging, and rightfully so. Our action plan for the district, the future-ready president asked if they could use our action plan as an exemplar for other districts. So it's going to be placed on their website as well to serve as a model, if you will.
That was a fantastic addition.
Pretty impressive.
Thank you for that. So this next piece, we've talked about. As a collective team, we talked about instructional. We're constantly looking at what we can do to make sure that we're individualizing our approach for every student that's sitting in front of us, specific to the academics and the learning experience. As a district, and I just want to take a moment to thank all the administrative team and thank our teachers, because this is a tremendous amount of work, but it's worth doing. Because what it's allowing us to do is take a look at all of our students, the students in front of us, to understand who they are as learners, and we're able to adjust our instruction to get to them where they are and build their foundational skills. So what we're doing is, we're utilizing data teams at every single school building. Those data teams are taking a look at various data points and assessments that are being administered. Those are aligned to the different standards that we're obligated to teach, depending on the grade level. With that information, they're going back to the different teams, grade levels, and departments, and spotlighting areas of proficiency, and they're celebrating that. But most importantly, they're saying, what are our areas of growth? And they're creating plans and focus plans to intentionally teach to those specific deficits. That's ongoing work, this is our first year doing it. And I have to say, we were able to finish our first cycle of plans. And the improvements across all the different grade levels are something that we're very, very proud of. So that's one piece. The cohort testing analysis is something that we've talked about. At the central office level, we're taking a look at the state testing. We're taking a look at the different demographic subgroups to see how they performed at the different assessments that were administered to see, does that create some sort of awareness or understanding for us of what we could do differently to support those specific students? This is something that is an ongoing effort. This is our in-house professional development days. This is something that we plan as an administrative team. We, the first two days of school, we get a chance to understand what are our goals for the year, and we provide clarification and support to our teachers to get them off the ground so they can execute it. The October days, we've really focused on data teams, what they are, and how they're going to benefit our teaching. And most recently, in January, that's something that we put together, this specific structure we put together probably about seven years ago, that's really teacher-driven. What that means is, we asked the teachers, what are some topics that you would like to learn more about? But not only that, we gathered that information. We know that we have incredible teachers within our district. So we have our own teachers and administrators delivering that professional development. So like I said before, the teachers pick what they want to go to, but also the teachers and administrators are delivering that training to our staff. Something that we want to talk about that is going to be ongoing for the remainder part of this year, that might spill into next year, but worth noting. We're constantly looking at what we can do differently and how we can continue to improve our instruction, as I said. I'm happy to report the Ramapo Ridge Middle School ELA Department and Math Department identified that there are different structures that they can put into place, instructionally, in some sort of workshop model type of approach, that they'll be able to work in small groups and individualize their instruction. They wanted to take a look at different surrounding districts that have that in place already. So our supervisors took a team of teachers to various middle schools to see it in action. They came back, they're in the process of really talking through what they saw and how they can implement that here in the district. I really find this approach to be extremely effective because it allows the teachers and the supervisors to talk through what will work best for our students here. So hopefully, that will create some shifts in our instructional approach to continue to build that individualized model. We also have some updated, we're going to add some courses next year to our business department. I just want to spotlight two. We have an honors AP course, it's called Advanced Marketing. It's a dual enrollment course for our business pathway. We also have our fundamentals, I know I'm getting wordy, fundamentals of investing. It's an elective course, it's also for our business pathway. Just to explain you our business pathway, it's part of our pathways program at the high school. Before I stop, there's three areas of focus for our business pathway. There's the accounting, finance, investing area focus. We have our business law and economics focus. We also have our advertising, marketing, and sports management focus. So that's something that, if you recall, the pathways program started a couple of years back. We continue to refine and make that even, make that the highest level that we possibly can provide. These are our two awards. These are just some pictures spotlighting the work that's happening. We have the academic decathlon, we have our coaches at the elementary level in action. And then over here, we just have a publishing party at the element, not just. We have a publishing party at the elementary level. And this just talks about the collaborative experiences that we have going on at the middle school. And we also have our infusion of text that matches the students in which we serve. Thank you.
It was great, thank you, appreciate it. Well, our social emotional learning component, in my opinion, is what creates our well-rounded student and embodies the whole student from the academic to the individual. And as you know, we have goals that are related to having students become one within our community, to find places within our community. We have means by which to offer professional development to our staff. And we ensure that we're building our students prepared to enter the world as individuals, yet members of community. So some of the highlight for the course of the 22-23 school year up until this point is of course something that point of pride that Dr. Torro has already spoken about. And that's our middle school introduction of after-school sports. And we just want you to realize here that that absolutely meets our SEL expectations in so many ways, whether you're on the court or off the court, whether you're attending, or you're just discussing it after the pep rally. It is a means by which to create students who become part of a total community. We are working and continuing on our mindfulness cohort three training. So these are our teachers who are being trained, as well as the trainers are going into our classrooms and modeling for teachers on SEL activities around mindfulness. What's crucial is that we anticipate that this will be the last cohort that's actually trained by an outside consultant. Because we ultimately believe that our strength exists within our district, as you'll see the third bullet, the SEL coaches, who are right now modeling for colleagues and leading initiatives for Mindful March. But what's crucial is that these members and coaches become our future trainers in our district so that as new members join our district, they will have colleagues that can model all of the techniques that we once required the use of an outside consultant for. Another example of SEL is that we created the Zen Den at the Joyce Kilmer School. And various elementary classrooms have calming corners, places where students can go, take a breath, re-regulate, chat with each other, have the opportunity again to bring that whole learning experience to the whole child. So here we are, where we're able to see that NJTSS doesn't just rest in the academic domain. We have an NJTSS cohort who's designed to address the SEL. And that is specific to learner behaviors, SEL behaviors, and factors that positively or negatively impact student learning. We have coined the phrase learner behavior here in Mawa, we're not going to let it go. And that is basically all of the metacognitive skills, the skills that it takes to be a student in our district. Be it how do you organize a binder, to how do you use your locker in middle school? Those are all crucial learner behaviors that when one doesn't have it, the rest of the curriculum just can't fall into place. So we have the cohort this year, not digging in as deeply as the data teams are in the instructional area, but rather phasing it in the work. Once we master it from an instructional level, we'll move on to our SEL cohorts. And part of that is identifying a universal screening instrument that's going to give us information about where our learners are, not in the area of reading, writing, and arithmetic, but all of those learner behaviors that are crucial to being a member of our community and ultimately a graduate of our system. And then lastly, the board was very generous in funding a second guidance position in our elementary level. So in the K-5, right now, we have two elementary positions. And those two individuals have spent the year, obviously, doing whole group, individual, and classroom instruction. We've worked in areas of morning group, developing friendships, monitoring your space, being a member of character ed, and perseverance was also one that we worked with our students on. So that's a snapshot of our 22-23 school year. On the left, you see the Zen Den in action. And on the right, you see an example of a mindful activity in which students are basically articulating something during the holiday season that they're thankful for.
Thank you. Our third frame consists of our community connections. So I'm really proud of this slide. And we've referenced the Thunderbird Partnership Program over and over again, and that's all been designed on purpose. You know, we have found that if students can see themselves in the future, they can find their purpose here. And we believe that's really important for every child. So we believe that the Thunderbird Partnership Program has been able to provide students with an opportunity to see themselves beyond Mawa or Mawa schools. So we're really proud in that we've had participation in every one of our school buildings. Last year, we had 234 established partnerships. And of those 234, we had 106 visits. So as of the creation of this presentation, which was about two weeks ago, we had 33 visits thus far this school year. I know that we've just booked about 15 since then, which is very much on par as to where we were our last school year. So we continue to find more experts to serve as resources for our students and our teachers and our classrooms and supplement our curriculum in that way. The second piece is our dual enrollment program. We've been creating additional courses. I know Dr. Torro had referenced a few courses that are being created as a result of student interest. And just to make our program that much more robust and provide our students with additional options. So we're working on additional partnerships with outside post-secondary programs to provide our students with additional opportunities to earn college or post-secondary credits. So when they're graduating from our district, they have some credits to fall back on. Our second piece is, we have done a lot of work with our ESL, ELL families who are new to our township. We have instituted talking points, which is technology that allows our teachers to connect and communicate efficiently with our families in their native language through text message, photos, and video. This two-way communication tool makes our families feel welcomed, valued, and members of our schools and greater community. We've also been making a conscious effort to intentionally create those opportunities for our younger and older students to connect, connect from school building to school building. I know that we've talked about language buddies and pen pals at both the secondary and elementary programs. And we'll have more opportunities to speak to later in the school year when we close out year three of our strategic plan. We've also, as everyone is fully aware, we've undergone an equity audit that we will have that report in approximately two months. We will obviously speak to that a little further when we get to that point. So here you can see Mrs. Corella, our supervisor of our ESL program. She has posted about our adult ESL classes that we're really proud of. They're very well-attended and serve as a really valuable resource for our adults, our parents, to learn the language, but also to connect in that way. We also have our JK Student Council that posted about food drives and things of that nature during the holidays. And our local fire department, you can see here on the left, visited Lennepie Meadows, so we have those local connections there. Our wise women in science and engineering visited. Our young women who are looking to pursue careers in STEM as part of our GEMS organization here at Mawa High School. And then also, we've referenced this at a previous board meeting where we had Ms. Jasmine Worga, who is an author, come to visit our students to speak about a book that they had just completed reading.
Okay, good evening. For the fourth frame of the strategic plan, the facilities frame, what we are addressing here, our goals are listed on top. To briefly go over each one of the individual goals below to regularly evaluate our learning spaces, to update them and make sure that any outdated or underutilized spaces are addressed, and to allocate funds yearly in a very thoughtful manner to ensure that when we are developing our facility and capital project plans year over year, that we are regularly thinking about the other frameworks of the strategic plan, making sure that we're tying back to them. And to make sure that we're doing this, again, not only for our spaces inside the walls, inside the classrooms, but outside as well. We've done a lot of work over the last few years, but we wanted to just specifically highlight some of the larger-scale items that are being done this year, the 22-23 year. We've spoken about some other items earlier on that we've completed over the summer. But again, to focus on some of the larger items, one of the largest that recently came to full completion is the HVAC upgrade project at Joyce Kilmer School. This was done for 16 classrooms in the 300 wing of the school, where the services to the closed classrooms, heating and air conditioning, some were provided by unit ventilators that were along the walls and underneath the windows, others were provided by window air conditioning units. This update and renovation has now allowed both systems to be housed in one unit, offering better access to the windows and better control over the systems as well. One of the things that lacked here was a good overall central control. So we have that now. And the time and effort that we spent in looking at the JK system has really paid off because this system, not only the control side of it, but for the physical HVAC unit as well, we spent a lot of time because we wanted to use this as a template for other HVAC projects that we have going forward. To make sure that the systems that we have here were successful and then can be implemented when we have other HVAC projects so we can have a more consistent infrastructure throughout the district and all our schools. Another project, oh, Dr. Fair, if you want, thank you. The Mawa High School Grandstand Project. The grandstand has served the community and our student athletes wonderfully over the last almost 60 years, from the late 1960s when it was built. But it was ready for an upgrade and to be updated. So we are very excited to see that project go on, just down the driveway here. That's going to improve access to the area. It's going to improve the experience for our spectators and for the student athletes who perform there. Also, one of the things that we wanted to make sure while we had it there previously, but wanted to make sure we can enhance it was any ADA access to the facility for anybody that may require it. The last item on this slide, we have a few more in the next, but the last one on this one is completion of a window project at Ramapo Ridge, Betsy Ross, and George Washington Elementary Schools. That project was plagued a little bit with some supply chain issues and getting some of the materials in, as many things have happened over the last year or so. But very thankful that Ramapo Ridge and George Washington Schools have been completed. The contractor just recently started in Betsy Ross School, and that should be completed very soon. So with the warm weather that we've had recently, being able to, in a more efficient way, open up and operate the windows has been great for those students and for those classrooms. The last few things that we want, that I wanted to discuss here is just that to remind the board and the community that we're not pausing at all. We're continuing to regularly update our plans as it pertains to a schedule for our HVAC roofing, paving areas, as well as other areas as well. But these are some we wanted to highlight. It's definitely not a set-it-and-forget-it type method where we're establishing it at the onset and then sticking to that plan. That plan regularly will have to evolve. It's a living document, different circumstances may dictate us to make adjustments, and we're constantly looking at that. Always going back to separate from the strategic plan, but it was done really in unison with it, when this was done in 2020, was a facility audit, working with LAN Associates based in Midland Park, for having them come in. It was the first time we had worked with LAN in this capacity. It was great to see them be a true independent set of eyes to go through our buildings, our facilities, our fields, and really look to see where, from that fresh perspective, we can improve in areas that we might want to focus on. They gave us a very detailed report, and we're constantly going back to that report, crossing that and what's that we've been able to address, and using that as a base when we are considering new projects to come on. And lastly, certainly not least, is a recent bid award. I mentioned the HVAC project before that we did at Joyce Kilmer School. The next area to address HVAC, it was George Washington Elementary School. Again, another school where we have really good HVAC systems currently, but there's the opportunity to make it better from both a mechanical perspective, as well as an overall control perspective too. So that project was bid and awarded just at our last Board of Ed meeting. We're looking forward to that project occurring this summer, summer of '23. And as we've done with our other frames, pictures are worth a thousand words, so we wanted to give a few pictures and highlights of some of the projects that are going on. Over on the left, our new bleacher project. At this point in those pictures, the old bleachers had been removed, and we've completed doing the piers and posts for the new bleachers. In the middle here, we have, and this is thanks also to our partnership with Mawa Schools Foundation. They've been great in partnering with us with different projects over the years. The middle school was able to create an improved outdoor learning space just outside of the arc classroom in the back of the building there. Again, thanks to Mawa Schools Foundation, and I think maybe in coordination with the HSO as well, that contributed funds to make that space happen. And in the bottom right, over at Betsy Ross Elementary School, again, another area that we saw could be utilized in perhaps a better way and created another outdoor learning environment for the students over at... and created another outdoor learning environment for the students over at Betsy Ross.
So all of the information that we've discussed is consistently being updated on our strategic plan website. And obviously, as we come into the spring and we provide the board and our community with an additional update, we will certainly update all of those progress bars, as well as the information connected to each goal, as Dr. Torro has already referenced.
That's all we have.